Good evening, everyone. Today is March the 13th. This is a committee of the whole. We apologize, our microphones aren't working tonight, so I'll have to speak loudly. Tonight, we're going to have the students of Amity Elementary lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Flag's on the wrong side.
Mr. President, I can get a quick word with Mike if you give me about five seconds.
Mr. Martino, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Wolf. Mrs. Byes.
Present.
Mr. Kurtz.
Here.
Mr. Martino here. Mr. O'Gus O'Neil.
Here.
Mr. Potts.
Here.
Mr. Rathkev.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Radowski.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here. The procedures for public participation are printed in the inside of your handout. Everyone here hopefully has signed in at the table. If you haven't done so, please do so before you go. If you would like to address the board on items of the agenda, you can approach the podium. Please state your name and address for the record and sign in there as well, and you'll be afforded three minutes to make your presentations. You're over. Here we go. Try the on switch. item 10. The job description was incorrect in the handout you were given, and the attached to the agenda edit is the correct job description. Under 11 programs, motion to approve the creation of three new high school student clubs with no request for stipend, computer science club, student affairs council, and the United Nations Club, remove student affairs council and replace with student affairs caucus. Also, under announcements, there will be an executive session following this meeting to discuss personnel. Okay, is there any public comment on items listed on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Okay. Dave, you want to do them first?
Sure. Great, thank you very much. Will you be hearing anything now? Two thumbs up. Good job, Tom. All right, now, I'm pleased to have a couple of groups here. First and foremost, we have the Nat Geo V medal winners, and Nat Geo V was a very intense contest, and I'm sure the three contestants will acknowledge that, and I did tell them that you were going to ask them some very hard questions, if you think so. So, that's up to you. Any geography questions, we will call that one. So, these guys are really, really good. Representing the Nat Geo V, we have Abby Munoz, who took third, Justin Adukus, who took second, and Tessa Morton, Tessa's step up, who is our champion this year. And Tessa is going to be, Tessa and Justin are going to be on a plaque that will be published in the main lobby, so let me show you that. This will be a plaque that is going to be located in the main lobby. We have one from spelling bee champions as well, however, spelling bees tonight, so we couldn't have our school champion here, so that's why we have Nat Geo V champions here. So, Tessa, would you like to talk about the contest and how intense it was?
(inaudible) Unfortunately, Tessa has an incompetent principal who missed the state test deadline for her by one's day, so she didn't get a chance to do that. Fortunately, she and her family are very forgiving. I have not had my tires slashed out in March a lot, but that was something that was a very big mistake on my part for not getting a chance to be on the state line, so I have a college vice president since that competition. Now, for the bus buddies, this is near here, Mr. O'Gus O'Neil's part here. This group of people did a fantastic job, or they made that whole plan work with buses. What do they want to do in Nat Geo? They're doing Nat Geo certificates, Abby Munoz. And this is photo op, parents. And Johnson took second place. And then for our bus buddies, we have Nora Fisher. I was assured you were going to be able to make it back. Mr. Harrison, you want to give the certificates to the bus buddies?
Okay.
Nora Fisher? Along there. Okay. Hey, parents, do you want to come up and get a picture? Or do a group, do a picture? Okay, we'll do a group then. Okay, Ashley? Come on up. Wyatt? I'm surprised Wyatt isn't in the group. Harrison? Taylor? He is in the group. Honestly, I think it changes a lot, but I don't know why, I have no idea. Julie isn't. And Tessa jumps in here. Tessa's also a bus buddy. Please give them around.
Mr. Miller, what is actually our bus buddy?
I could explain that, you've got our picture. Oh, thank you for asking that. Now, with the bus buddies doing, thanks for asking that question, it's wrapped in. The bus buddies volunteer their time for basically a dog. So, these guys do a terrific job, they get a good dismissal, and what they do is they make sure that all the buses are called, and all the kids know that they're supposed to come out, they go back and forth to tell me what bus numbers are there, and then they all go out and meet the kids coming into the office and the young kids, and help them to get on their proper bus. So, this is a real important task that they're doing, because at first, this was all new to the young kids. Now, I don't even know if they really know where their bus is, they just know the bus buddies, and they just follow, it's like duck, following the bus buddies along. So, these guys do a fantastic job, and I really appreciate everything they do, and I try to keep them happy to the dog along. So, hopefully that'll last for a little bit longer. They might be wanting two dogs, and they're working a job they're doing. Thank you, guys, for coming tonight, I appreciate that. Mr. Harrison, Mr. Wolf, if we could get a photo op, there's three of our youngsters here, and we're here for Project Max. The parents, come up and get a picture, if you're here. Okay? And I know you are. So, we have Jordan Lafferty, Colin Devlin, and Freddie Lacy. Go ahead and get a picture. And everyone in the audience, we will be talking in depth about Project Max very shortly to give you an idea of what these three students are doing, how fantastic a job these three students are doing. Go ahead, thank you. Thank you.
Jim, do they have certificates? This is being told.
Who?
Jim, did they have certificates?
No.
Can you hand them?
Yeah, I do. I have more, I have more project notes.
I have more. Okay. I didn't read any, you don't have all the signing, I'll pass them out.
Guys, will you come back up? Colin, Freddie, Jordan. You two are being recognized, you have certificate, because you guys are awesome students, and we're going to talk about your class, we're going to send videos out, we're going to do that a little bit, but Mr. Max, certainly for you, so stand in the seat. And Jordan Lafferty. And then we'll take your certificate for our students in the class.
Is there a point sent down? There is no point sent down. Okay, here we do.
Okay, we have a lot more recognitions. Okay. Ryan Miller, are you here today? Ryan Miller? Oh, I can tell by the uniform. Okay, Ryan has reached the achievement of Eagle Scout, so the uniform kind of gave him a lot.
Eagle Scout, basically, the highest rank of Eagle, and like, all the way up to like 12 all the way, to like, your 18, you might have to like, I got it, 15, so this is all kind of a high road. But, one thing you have to do to be Eagle is a project for the community, and I have salt, so it's a portal around the end, and it's like stones, and like, I cut up the stone, and cut up the door, lay down, in the fabric, place it back down, place the portal around it, make it like, all night.
Okay, now, we have the middle school TSA awards, delivered by their wonderful principal, Rex Road.
All right, for the Catholic combinations, Luke Wharton, top close, please. I'm sorry, these are all a little bit late. Cindy, who was in team A, she won first place in website design. Ella Ziner, who won first place in promotional marketing. John Devers, second place in inventions and innovation. And Donna Fossil on the state qualifying leadership strategies, too, they won first Nick Yorani, who won second place on the junior solar sprint. Silent Tree, video game design, first place. Aiden Hall, who won first place in video game design. Connor Hurdline, who unfortunately is not on the sheet, so I'm not sure what you did, Connor. You won second place in play. Captain Hendricks, second place, team A, for children's stories. Rebecca Hoover, third place in the tech hall. Connor Hunt, won second place on his team for inventions and innovations. David Kim, you was on team C, that won second place in the junior solar sprint. Andrew Kong, who won... Is Andrew here?
No.
Okay, so Andrew can't tell us what he won. Oh, there he is. He was a state qualifier on, and he won second place in structural engineering. And also, won, second place, in structural engineering. Joanna McCollum, third place in electrical applications. And also, won first place on the website design. Cindy Moyer, who won third place in the Pennsylvania materials process team. Rhonda Nguyen, children's stories, she won first place with her team. Emily also won first place in digital photography as well. Jonathan Schnabel, second place in inventions and innovations. Don Self, second place, team C, for the junior solar sprint. Sarah Toriano, who is first place in team B, for the children's stories. Under Sprinkle, first place, challenging technology issue. Carter Stark, second place, in the way of... Zoe Sweet, third place for career of prep. Or, sorry, second place on team A, for challenging technology issue. And first place for career of speech. And first place for environmental engineer. Emerson Weaver, first place in website design. And second place, team A, second place, children's stories. Sarah Lee Meyer, STEM innovation, third place. Tiffany Wilson, first place, website design. Dusty Wonderley, first place, video game design. Bradley Yuskavage, second place for team C in the junior solar sprint. Justin Bennett, place one, team A, video game design. Did we miss anyone? I apologize. Oh, we did! Hold on, John Danson. He won second place in the junior solar sprint. All right, congratulations to everyone.
Good evening. Now, we're going to recognize the high school TSA at this time, and before we do that, I want to recognize two key things. The first one is every year we give an anonymous donation for the high school and middle school, $750 for each citizen to support, help support this program. So, I'm sure that person's out there tonight, so thank you. Secondly, you know, the students that are going to get these awards tonight, really, I'm sure, would much rather have them from one of the people who meets them, and that's just why we speak to you. This is one of the highlights of our performance.
For those of you who don't know what TSA is, just because the middle school is like, people say, "What's TSA?" It's Technology Students Association. Those are our future pioneers, our analytical technicians. Those are the kids who are going to bring money back to the school district, launch rockets into outer space. These are brilliant students, and this country is there, so.
Can I ask what the, is the solar sprint like a car, like a solar bar?
Yeah, there's several different vehicle races that they can do. Solar sprint relies solely on solar panels. Then there's a calculo race, which is powered by a calculator, believe it or not. Then they have flight, delta flight, which is they build little planes, and they do that at the high school level as well. They have to build that completely. All of the vehicles have to do, have to meet certain parameters and price limitations, much like Odyssey and the mine does. So, it requires a lot of ingenuity. It's absolutely brilliant, so highly, highly like based in STEM and meets all of those foundational needs, so, yeah.
So, for artificial design, place three, Alex Santos and Victoria Passer. Okay, and then our next one is going to be biotechnology design, third place, and these are team events just soon enough. So, it's Madison O'Perry, third place, Zachary Longen, Ian Trinios, Josie Einhardt, Scott Schilling, and Terrence Block. And I know some of them are not here because they just returned from Pecan, which is a key level that also at the high school, so. Third one, the dating technology issues, place one is another team event, Zachary Longen and Scott Schilling. And digital video production, another team event, Heather Brynet, Justin Piper, Jacob Rendell, and Justin Semmer. And a solo event, extenderating a speech, place one, Joshua Hapner. And another team event, place three, for fashion design and technology, Morgan Brothers, Alex Santos and Victoria Passer. Future tech teacher, place two, Maddie O'Mercy. STEM career, place three, Rihanna McInara. Video game design, team event, place one, Alison Priest, Alanya McHardick. And for EA Safety Illustration Computer Base Design, place three, Victoria Passer. And last one, chapter two, which is a written exam, place three, Maddie O'Mercy. And then all of these that qualify will go on to the state competition, both in middle school and the high school, which is to be held the end of the week.
That's it.
Can you put that package aside?
No, um, a bunch of bags, I see, I'm good. Okay.
And I'd let them know that you can go if they want?
Okay, parents, if you would like to leave after the awards, you're more than welcome to go. Or you can hang out with us the rest of the night. We would also like to recognize a teacher, high school teacher, Laura Bittler, for being named a semifinalist for the Pennsylvania Teacher of the Year. Okay, next we have Ms. Myla Hayes. She's the new member service manager for the Southeast Region PS, Pennsylvania School Board Association. She's here tonight to talk about the new services and the old services that are provided by the PSBA for board members. And I have something here for you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me this evening. It was an absolute pleasure, actually. As superintendent parents mentioned, my name is Myla Hayes, and I am the new member services manager. It sounds easy to me. That means I am accessible to you. I actually live and work particularly in Montgomery County, and part of my role is to be here for you. But also, part of my role is to make sure that you maximize your use in PSBA services. So, tonight, you all have handouts on at your desk. I am not going to really cover them. I know you will have an opportunity to be able to take a look at those, at all the different services available to you. But I will highlight some major services that are really great resources for you. If I can start, we have a number of PSBA community resource services. And I'm not sure if you're familiar with all the services, but compensation studies. Really critical, I'm sure, when you're preparing for contract negotiations, perhaps. We provide comprehensive compensation studies. So, again, look at that, take a look at it, read it. If you have further questions, my card is attached to all of your packets. Job descriptions, we provide job description services. We've been doing that for the past 10 years, actually. It's a really critical service as well. It's paperless. And actually, those job descriptions must be developed, they're reviewed by our native teams. And then they're actually, they're actually used with our link, which is Career Gateway. I'm not sure if you're familiar with Career Gateway. Great opportunity to advertise your job vacancies, but also a great opportunity for you to actually identify qualified candidates. And then, also, we provide executive services. Not ensure, in the market, we're doing that right now, but executive services for superintendents and assistant superintendents.
You never know.
Very critical, I'm sure that's a daunting task for all of you, so very critical services. We would certainly walk you through that process. And then one is one of my favorites, board self-assessment. A board self-assessment actually is an interesting tool, because it actually allows you, as the board, to identify how effective you are, certainly. That's not a bad thing. But also, it actually allows you to identify, what are some of the things you want to work on? Perhaps it may be you want to be more of an advocate, certainly. So, PSBA will facilitate that process for you and also give you resources if you have identified some things you want to work on or do upon. And then, of course, PSBA also offers policy services. You may very well be familiar with the policy management services. Again, we've been doing that for years. And certainly, it helps you as a governing body, of course, to make sure you're compliant with both state and federal law. And then, of course, I think, are you familiar with Word docs? Word docs, great opportunity. Are you using Word docs?
We're in the middle of the policy review services, so the ones that have been approved are out of Word docs.
Okay, okay, great. Way to be transparent, of course, to be very organized, to be transparent for your community, who will see your agenda and your minutes as well online. I know a number of school districts that are using the resources. And then, of course, we provide a grant support program. When I was watching, actually, some of the different awards that the kids got, we have a grant directory. And, of course, you always want to continue to provide excellent services to your students. And I heard a lot of STEM stuff, and, of course, there's a lot of funding for STEM programs, for STEM programs. So, again, we have a grant directory available to you as well. And then, finally, there are, of course, we provide education services. I understand webinars, all kinds of trainings that are available to all of you as well. And then advocacy services, which is important to me, especially in this day and age. And I'll say that because I've worked in my former life, I've worked for state representatives for eight years, and it is critical that they hear from you, certainly, that you get FaceTime. So, PSBA actually organizes an advocacy day on April 24th, I believe, actually. And it's an opportunity for you to meet your legislators, to actually come face to face and say, "Yeah, I'm from Daniel Williams School Area School District. Remember us," certainly. So, it's really important that you get involved, and hopefully, you will attend the advocacy day on April 24th. Again, may have, I really just wanted to highlight those services and introduce myself to you as well. Again, I'm available to you. My cell number is actually on my card, as well as my office number. And if you have any additional questions, you are more than welcome to contact us. Thank you for having me.
Does any board member have a question for Myla? Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Okay, next we have a presentation, Project Max presentation.
I'm going to start with the actual Project Max video, and then I'm going to introduce our Project Max scheme, and we're going to show more about what Project Max means to everyone. These two words stick in my head every time I think of Project Max, is presuming competence. And if I could show you my students at the beginning of this year to where they are now. They've exceeded all expectations that I've had, I think that their parents have had, and the general education teachers have had. And I know that this is mainly due to Project Max and what I've learned, to not only be confident in myself, to push a little more, to see if the child can do it, but expect them to be able to do it, and they can. Pennsylvania was very fortunate to receive a state professional development grant, and we have affectionately titled it Project Max, but it's really about showing the word maximizing. And we use the word maximizing because we want to maximize access to the PA core and general education curriculum for all students, in particular, those students with complex instructional needs who may not have had that type of access or instruction in their classroom environment. Is that it's not about this.
It's not about which room you're receiving instruction in. It's that here you're raising the bar for everyone.
That bridging of where we are, where we want to go in Project Max is going to be that conduit that's going to get us from where we are to being able to offer standard to the line programs and age appropriate materials for all of our students.
It is using best instruction, best strategies, using general curriculum that all children can learn, no matter what their ability is or no matter what their disability is. It's a social justice issue. It's about providing access for all kids and not excluding some kids from some kinds of content based on evaluation to what they may or may not be able to do.
Education for students with complex instructional needs should look like it looks like for any student. They should receive access to all the same things as their non-disabled peers and have all the same opportunities.
There are certain elements, there are the underpinnings to this work. And one piece of it is what we call presuming competence. And presuming competence means that we are going to start with the least dangerous assumption that all students can learn. And that's just a grounding philosophy of this work.
This isn't your mama's preschool anymore. Everything that the kids learned in kindergarten is now almost in preschool or even earlier than that. So I think we really have to do our part. And I think Project Max has helped us to get to that part in preschool so that we can get kids ready for kindergarten. If we say that they can and we're not going to do this, it's too hard, it's too difficult, then we've already set that student back.
It doesn't matter what we have in terms of training and background. It boils down to, do we have it in here? Do we have the fire within? Because no matter what your skill set is, we can uniquely work together if we do it for the children.
When we have districts decide to engage in a project with us, what becomes important is that they not only receive professional development in an intense sort of way, but that we're there to help team meetings, talk about what that professional development means, think about what that means from an application standpoint in the classroom for the teacher, actually modeling, discussing, consulting over a period of time. And the teachers, the speech language therapists, the related service workers, the administrators, it's this robust team that's really looking at the entire process. So we don't just do a once and done and we're out. Implementation science says everyone continues to work together and create this continual feedback loop of, here's something new, let's try it, let's talk about how it works, let's adjust. And you keep moving forward. So it's a spiraling effect to continue the progress that's happening in the project.
The application activity I did was the KWL chart.
Okay.
So I provided the students with a chance to express and vocalize their work by using switches and the iPad. And I gave them choices of things to say as far as what do they know, what do they want to know, what have they learned.
I collaborate with the teacher to figure out what unit she would like to work on next. And sometimes I'll create a vocabulary board, which is very similar to kind of a communication board, but it has prioritized vocabulary for that specific unit. And I work on understanding the underlying vocabulary that is needed for the reading and math instruction in the classroom.
We know that effective instruction is incredibly important. So that means the planning and preparation of lessons, to the delivery of lessons, using great feedback, formative assessment, summative assessment, to see how our students are progressing so that we can monitor and adjust.
But then, as I work through Project Max, I'm learning so many different components of it, the collaborating with other teachers, the breaking down of a unit to provide the instruction more appropriately. It's just so beneficial. And if I had to explain it to someone, it almost makes your job easier because you're understanding all the important key aspects of instructing the students.
I'm so excited. I'm running around the room like, we're talking about types of clouds and we're talking about government and we're talking about layers of the earth, of the earth. And these are things that we may not have taught 10 years ago. But now our kids can access these things with the tools that I've been given as a result of the training through Project Max. We have a partnership with what we call our PTI, our parent organization for Pennsylvania. And we are forming a network of parents who are helping from a grassroots respect to help build the capacity of parents out there to understand more and more about not only what's happening in schools, but what they can hope to have happen for their children.
My role as a parent in Project Max is giving the community of parents a louder voice and advocating for their children. And also, to some parents, this change in education is very intimidating, so I'm also here to support them.
So that coaching aspect comes in, that you know, four hugs are better than one. And we're finding that that's a critical piece that just is in constant motion. And it seems to be the piece that everyone relies upon to keep moving forward in the work that they're doing.
Not only are you guys providing us with the monthly professional development, which are like the have tos, but you're also providing us with the guidance by coming into our classrooms. You're taking the time to support us in where we need to be. And I think having those outside eyes on us helps guide us to continue to get that hard work done that we know we have to get done. So keeping us honest and accountable.
I think coaching is a critical component because it helps the new teachers know as they come on that they're going to be supported, that they're not just being kind of thrown out there with these ideas and trying to figure it all out themselves.
The coaching that I received last year through Project Max helped me to transform my own classroom because I realized that I could be doing so much more to help my students learn standard line material.
I think the broadest impact to date that we are seeing is that students who typically have not had access to the standards or possibly communication systems and devices are having that opportunity now. And it's really telling us that these students can possibly do much more than what was originally expected or maybe has been expected traditionally in the past. That the work that's being done is a frontrunner of work in this area with students with complex instructional needs. There's a real collaborative effort happening in education right now. And our intermediate units have been great partners. Our districts who have been with us have been great partners. And there's a collegiality and a feeling of excitement for education that we see with folks. And that's just a good feeling to be a part of that work and to see that work happening.
I saw a classroom of students that were at a life skills designation. They are receiving math, reading, social studies, science instruction. It's integrated across the curriculum. It's integrated with the speech therapists and the classroom teacher are collaborating together. And students are doing much more than people thought possible.
I've had Gen Ed teachers come to me and say, can I access the materials that you're using? Because I have students in my classroom that could benefit from these materials as well. And now we're building relationships with our Gen Ed teachers.
As a mother with a child with special needs, I've never been able to push him. I've seen him have so many obstacles in his life that I've never wanted to ever make him more uncomfortable or bring any other hardships to his life. And so when he came to the IU, he was saying three or four words at a time. And that was good enough for me because he was communicating. But now he is talking in sentences. He's reciting nursery rhymes. And I see the confidence he has. And I see what happens with this child that they're bringing out of his comfort zone and making him do more than I ever thought he would be capable of doing.
We have a parent, her son is 14. Now that she's seeing that he has it in there, he just has a way of getting it out now. She said, I'm just so happy that you guys are incorporating stuff that is real life, academic, important stuff for my son to know.
We have a student that has, that has really struggled. She has a lot of needs, about medical. And we have just recently started to figure out how to communicate with her. And we're finding now that we're starting to break down that barrier of communication with her, that there's a lot happening in there that we just didn't realize. We kind of suspected, but we didn't realize until we figured out a way where we can start communicating with her. And now we're starting to see that she is a very good thinker. She's a bright young lady. And we just needed to break through that communication piece. And once we got into it, the sky's the limit. Now we can't wait to see how far we take it.
I think that we're looking at growth, growth for kids. Growth, especially though, for adults. Because we're really not changing kids. We're really changing adults.
It's helped me to think larger than just, this child has to do A, B, and C because that's what the class is doing. Well, maybe this child can do D and can answer it in a different way. And so it's helped me to think differently with my kids.
Project Max has had a significant impact on our service delivery, on our instruction. And we will continue working with our school districts and growing this throughout our IU classrooms. It has had profound implications.
The vision for the future of Project Max at IU VI is that there will no longer be the language of Project Max. It will simply be the, this is what we do at IU VI. This is how we educate our students. This is how we train our teachers. This is how we support all of our SAG members. And then it will be just the how we do what we do.
Through Project Max, my perspective has changed. Where I look at those students and I think, okay, it's in there. How can I get it out? So I provide them with multiple modalities, multiple ways of telling me what's in there.
Empowering. And that's empowering professionals, administrators, children, parents. It's empowered the whole gamut of those involved with educating kids.
The things that we are learning in our professional developments and I'm taking into the field and working with my teachers, these are all things that are best practice techniques that can be used with all students, including those with complex learning needs.
Revolutionary because it really has changed the way that our teachers are looking at their practice every day. It's pushed them outside of their comfort zone. It's pushed our tech team outside of the comfort zone. It's pushed me outside of my comfort zone.
It's believing that if we provide the right kinds of supports and instructional opportunities that all children can learn, all teachers can teach, and good things can happen for all students.
I see more success, more expectations for students, more cooperation, and just more learning all around.
Finally, we're taking action and addressing the needs of students with complex instructional needs and giving them what they need to live as contributing citizens.
There has to be a sense of community that we're all in, that we're focused on what the kids need. And we're doing our part at each level to help them sustain. So that's the word, community.
All students have the same opportunity to learn and grow and develop as learners. Supports are different, but they all have the same opportunities. So everything.
Life-changing. Those were the words I would use to explain Project Max. So thank you for watching that. I know it was long, but it certainly does a great job describing the program. A little bit about the program. This cohort cohort has rolled out of state, has been in year one for us. We're the only school to, in first county, use a program in Project Max. We started in the summer. We started with a three-day training at Penn State. And we continued with professional development. Continued that week, one day, one full day along with professional development with our whole team. But back to the big ideas of Project Max. The first is system change. And in order to do that, we needed to form a team. So I'd like to introduce my team. We have Jamie Train, who is our regular education teacher on the team. Monica Lacy is our parent. Hannah, which is our senior, is our recent service provider. Megan Kane is our special education teacher. Dane is our administrator and our curriculum leader. Dane and I both wear two hats. And I wear the headed internal coach and the special education leader on the team. What we'd like to do now is share what Project Max means to Daniel Willey. Back to show what the overall Project Max is for you. So we're going to have Jamie, Hannah, and Megan talk about the paradigm shift and the platform, the systemic technology, and application and modification for them.
So this is really teaching. I started teaching in 2004. And I started as a life skills teacher. And in 2004, all the students who were in my classroom stayed with me for homeroom, specials, lunch. They never really went into the general education curriculum. Now that we're, I took a few different positions. And now I'm back, this is my first year back to the life skills program. And I'm really excited that Project Max, we're using it. Our students now are out, they're in general education, all of our students for lunch, specials, science, social studies, and some language arts. And some push out for a little math. So Hannah and I took some videos of the students in my classrooms. And you're going to see some formative assessments. You're going to see how we changed some curriculum so it can meet everyone's needs. Yeah, so one more. You'll also see it through the tech hall. Oh, yeah, so write that on your phone. Once you have systemic technology right, they'll do it. Or can you spell it for me? Okay. Great, you can tell them. It's a seven. You want to write seven with your homework? Jordan, you got it right too. Give me a high five. Julie is ready. Jordan's ready. You write five plus three. And these are students who were just working on number rec, things like that before. And now they're doing math addition. Some students are doing multiplication, word problems, things that are aligned to the Pennsylvania curriculum. Here, let's try together. She thought she was right because she put the same answer as her partner. What did you do? What she really needed. Did you say it for us? Six, you got it. Good job. She told me the word "mam." Let's see the sound. Oh, you want to write on the board first? That's. Before, they're starting spelling, but we're working on phonemic awareness. So stretching out the sounds, blending them. Hey, good job. Can you spell it? Huh? Good, it's in there. Nice job. Listen, okay, I'm going to say huh.
These are the kinds of skills that they used to. A lot of the time, they were just working on sight words rather than trying to learn how to read. It's assuming that you just memorize as many words as you could.
Oh, there you go.
In this case, she just wrote.
Can you write it for me now on your? Mam. Can you say the word for us? You get out of that screen. Good job.
So this is a formative assessment. So I can take what they learned here. And then, if we had school tomorrow, I would use that to teach more.
Is that an hint? I'm sure.
And I'm pretty much just saying the letter sounds. They're picking it, and then I'm saying this, "a word." And they have to pick alphabetally through the word. Uh, this is one of our awesome students who's here. So we're using assistive technology. He's using speak to text. So he'll speak into the dragon and he'll, so he can write his writing assignments. And he's working on science. That's a general education, or moon, stars. So, he pretty much wrote, he knows a full moon, or a new moon is when there is no moon. And he was correct. And then he copied it on to a piece of paper. So he could do it independently without us guiding him. We knew he knew what it was.
Alright, so, I'm Jamie Train, who's a general educator during the second grade. And for Project Max, what's really changed for me is the way that I plan and what I think about as I plan my lessons. So, when I'm planning, I'm thinking, how am I going to make sure that all of my students have access to the learning that is taking place during this lesson? And I created, there's an example of a lesson, a real lesson that I created that was based in math. And then I actually connected it with our homework. I created a QR code that was sent home on their homework sheet. So when they got home, if they needed extra practice, if they wanted to share it with their parents, if they had learned that day, or if their parents just wanted to see how we roll the teaching app. Nowadays, they will scan that QR code and stay connected with what they're first learning in school. So here's an example of interactive whiteboard lesson.
How to recreate subtraction problem and how to record the steps to our reproofing. Today, when we follow our steps for reproofing, we're going to run into a problem where there are zero tens to be written down. When that happens?
I think you're a meanest kid in the world.
Tens. And then from our tens, there are ones. Let's look at the problem. Five hundred three minus one hundred fifty eight. I'm going to first draw a picture of five hundred three. And then number five hundred three, so five hundred, zero tens, and three ones. Now I'm going to look at what I am subtracting. One hundred fifty eight. I know that I need to start by one, three minus eight. And ask myself, is the number on top more, or is the number on the bottom more? Because there are four.
Um, so, what's new about that is we could use that in class that day. And then QR code, tell me if you're able to access that video at home. I have a homework tool that is sent to, just connect with your parents. So it's a good homeschool connection there. Um, this picture is a student. It just shows some of their combinations. That's the next thing I ask myself when I'm planning is what resources do I have? Or what resources can I create that will give access to the learning of all of my students? And this little guide on some combinations to help them with writing. So what we do is we use the iPad. And he records his ideas. He were researching reading bridges. So he read what about reading bridges. And as he was reading, he would record his ideas and the facts that he was learning on the iPad. And then, when he went to actually write, he could just prepare independently and push play on the iPad. He's into one of these facts that he had said, write it down, push play again, and he worked independent in that way. He's also holding a pencil that's adapted to help students form a correct pencil grip. And then a highlighter strip that makes the spelling into a roadblock for this child. So whenever he would come to work, if he didn't know how to spell, he would have been highlighted. And that way, he wasn't blocking his ideas from being written down. Okay, and next, I think about what does learning look like, or what should it look like? And this next example, this next video is an example of a formative assessment. Where all students are given the chance to answer a question. It's an essential question for our science lesson that day. And it's the same answer. So, everybody who participated, maybe by the time you had heard your peers repeat it ten, twelve times, if you're a child who wasn't quite sure of the answer, or if you were a child who is a little unsure of taking a risk, you've now heard the answer repeated multiple times, that you now feel comfortable to go ahead and share your learning with the class as well.
So what is the one main thing that we saw in all of the shapes that had a stable position? Use your notebooks to help if you need to. Josh, call someone and pass them the ball.
The counterweight, we're at the bottom.
Great, Sophia, pass it to somebody. Let's stop for a minute. What question are we answering? And what's the vocab word? And when an object is balancing, we will say it's in what kind of position? A stable position. So we're answering the question, what made our shapes a balance, or what caused them to be in a stable position? Alright, Phillip, pass it to somebody else. It would make them, like, be stable. Thanks for using that vocab word lesson. Alright, pass to somebody else.
Okay, so you can see that everybody was like, get a chance with the ball. The answer was pretty much the same, although I was impressed with how the students kind of use their own language. But, I mean, it's the second grade, they're in kind of like counterweight, stable position. So their notebooks are in front of them, and they have access to the learning and access to sharing their learning. So that was a formative assessment. And last but not least, I always think about my classroom environment. And I think if we want to provide access to learning for all students, we have to think about what our learning environment looks like. And create an environment that feels safe for them to take risks and share their ideas and their thoughts. So you'll notice in my classroom in this next video, we don't sit in visual desks. I have tables that support collaboration. There are multiple seat options, exercise halls, to free chairs, to benches. And you'll see that just as we pan around in the classroom. Welcome to our classroom. We're enjoying a comfy, cozy, happy evening. This is our drama and hot cocoa day. So it's all like this cozy.
Our next member of the class today is Monica Lacy, who is our parent.
Sorry, I'm a cold, so. I just wanna say that as a parent, I attended the three days in Penn State. I was a parent that was very frustrated. I didn't know what was gonna happen to Freddie, how he was gonna learn. I knew that he was capable of learning. I just didn't know how to partner with the school, with his teachers, to help him to learn in the way that he was being to learn. So, when I attended this, I was asked to attend this Project Max summer session for three days. I left there inspired. First, I was so excited that Daniel Boone was one of the only schools in Pennsylvania, in Burke County, not Penn State, in Burke County, that was involved in this program. I don't work for, I mean, I worked for another school district, Reddick School District. And I was like, how do you even log? Like, this is crazy. So, just the fact that Daniel Boone was involved excited me. And then, when I started to attend the session, I was like, as a parent, like, Freddie is capable of learning. We just have to figure out, we have to partner with the teachers. I have to do my part as a parent. Teachers have to do their part. Administration has to do their part to help him and other students like him to learn. Because they're all capable of learning. I left there inspired. I have two older kids, this is most of them now. I used to say to them, "Hey, Freddie, you have to take care of Freddie." Like, if something happens to your father and I, you have to take care of Freddie. And when I left after the third day, actually the second day, I was like, Freddie will be taking care of you too. Once he's able to learn and figure out how he is best at learning, or what it takes for him to learn. Things need to be broken down. Things need to be, you know, as you saw him, speak to text. And I'm so excited that Mrs. Kane this year, she is on board with what his needs are. And it really isn't something that is just for students with complex needs. It is, as Jamie said, it's helping all students. So I'm excited again that Daniel Boone is on board. I'm excited about school and helping Freddie. And mostly, he's becoming more independent as other students in this, involved in this program, in this Project Max. They're all very independent. Homework is immature for him. Things that he brings home to study is like me having to be at school, just actually starting to read on his own. He's making strides academically that I never thought he would be able to do. And just being involved with Project Max, I hope it continues. I'm excited for him to move from elementary to middle school to high school. Because he's coming to middle school, he's gonna be in high school. So, yeah, Freddie. But again, it's for all students. It's not just for students with complex needs. I'm so grateful to be a part of it.
And I'm lucky to have Monica on my parent advisor presentation as well. So I did that exciting two times. So that's great. Now, I'm gonna show you, maybe. There we go. Something you guys know and love, I'm sure. I am very proud that AEC is spearheading this effort in Daniel Boone. One of the things I love about Daniel Boone, among many things, is the staff strive very hard not to set limits on students. You heard in the video, for example, about opportunity, about not setting those limits. And that's what we're really working towards. And you'll see it in everyday things, for instance, like the Suzacol. See if I can get this a little bigger for you. You guys wanna keep watching, or should I go? So when you look at that stage, anybody who was at the Suzacol, you saw an incredible array of abilities on that stage. In math, where a student went, you know, what class they were in, they were up on that stage. Here's another example in my building here. And this is the W A E C morning announcements.
This is Ryan and London, the W A E C workshop. If you're getting into morning speech, please watch.
Yeah, we're gonna move this a little forward. This is a young lady named.
Hello, my name is Amanda Spock. I'm there for the student hours in red and black.
Ignore the guy on the left.
My name is Dela Keever, and I am in 3B in the math and Mrs. DeCatur's class. And I am here today to talk about bullying. Because I see bullying happen every day. Treat others how you want to be treated. Thank you.
Very good job. Now, that is what we call Amity Talks. We do that every Thursday on our morning announcements. So students who write a letter, we actually, I used to read the letters. Now, they're actually reading letters on the air. Now, this particular slide, and I put one of these in each of your places. In the audience here, this is basically showing how this is research-based. So when you're looking at all of the different possible connections that we can make with students with the different lobes of the brain, it goes to show, rather than putting any kind of restrictions on students, it's a matter of finding new connections, new pathways, new ways that we can offer opportunity for students to access the entire curriculum. So I put some of those things up here for you that are in your handout. It will show you what we strive to do at Amity Every Day. And how we do that is through professional learning communities. So, for example, this particular PLC, Professional Learning Community, we were actually using some technology to incorporate into our classroom in order to provide all those opportunities for students. This particular one was on ThingLink. But just about every PLC, Vegas, MR PLCs, Jamie's and those PLCs, just about every single one, we will incorporate Project.
I think they were more useful in figuring out what the program is, the video from Project Max. Is it, if this is mine, if you believe in what it is, please correct me if you give me like a one-sentence description, is using this technology to help these students create it? Or is the question?
It's much more than that. But that is one of the big ideas. Project Max is communication, have whatever that takes, whether it's assistive technology, but using it across, across.
But what is it, like, what is Project, is it a program? It's a?
No.
It's a framework?
It's a, like, leading students, all students are competent learners. It's a mindset. The mindset.
Okay. What does presume competence?
Exactly. We're presuming competence. In the past, we presumed they were not competent because we didn't provide them the materials that we're providing all of the general education students with. We would say, they can't learn that. They can't learn to read. They can't do some, they can't do that at any point. No, that's not, that's not what we think.
Okay.
So just to wrap it up, Project Max, as I shared, this is cohort four, but year one for us. So year one is where you initiate. It's our, it's our, we've developed a team, we're doing our professional development. Next year, we'll scale up. We'll either scale up in this building by adding another class, or we'll scale up by adding a class in a different building. And then we replicated year three, where we continue to move it on to a different building. So eventually, it's throughout the district. One other thing, oh, so we have external coaches. We have two ladies from the IU four on our team, and we have a coach from the TAM. So what will happen is, this year, they were highly involved in the professional development. Next year, the TAM coach will step back. Our external coaches will be there initially, and then they'll pull back, and then it will just be school-based. And our goal will be then, provide professional development throughout the district. So I know it was long, and I appreciate your attention definitely.
Yep. What's the, like, what are next steps? Or, you know, what, is this, we're in like a learning stage here? Or are we?
No, we're actually, we're implementing. So we'll, we meet every month as a team, and then the ladies meet probably the day I kept doing school-based things. So we'll finish the, all of the professional development, and then next year, it's about scaling up. It's about getting a new group of teachers, training them, with all the professional development that we have, all the resources that we have.
Shelley, where did you come by this idea? Where, how did this start?
Well, what happens is, across the state of Pennsylvania, all of the IUs had to choose whether they were going to be cohort one, two, three, or four. So Berks County was four. So they, they had to find a class, and they knew I wasn't going to say no. So when they came and said, Shelley, would you be one of our Project Max teams? I said, absolutely. So that's how, how we got involved in that. They knew early on, they were going to ask. So I knew before it got to Berks County year, that we were going to be in Project Max. What an awesome team I have too, so. All right, thank you for your attention. I appreciate it.
Okay, as we continue with the superintendent's report, just want to give a shout out to the Second Annual Blazer Days Carnival with fireworks. It'll be held at the high school, June 28th through July 1st this year. So Second Annual Blazer Days. And just so you know that we do not have school tomorrow. It was just canceled.
So we should go.
No, the board, the board meeting is not canceled. I'm sorry.
Really dismissal though, right?
Okay, my report is done. Is there any public comment on the superintendent's report? Seeing none, we'll move to finance. Is there any questions or comments on any of the items listed under seven under finance?
I do have something quickly on the contract.
The busing contract?
Busing contract. Page 25, this is section 13, routing subsection, operating time schedules. And this is something that I emailed Mr. Subers about today, just to ask for clarification. I'm going to read the relevant sentence here, two sentences. "The operating time schedule is may be modified by the school district as occasioned demands. The routes need to be modified during the school year, i.e. new schools added, schools realigned, schools closed, new student added, or a new year service plan is modified. Contractors shall implement any routing changes soon as possible, but no later than five days following notice from the school district." My concern, and this might, I mentioned to Brian, Mr. Subers, it may seem pedantic, but saying, i.e., we're listing the only reasons that we could change the schedule and the contractors would have to modify it. If we're going to try to keep it open-ended for us, we should use EG because those are examples. So I, and he confirmed that on a script reading of the contract, that it's correct. It might have an issue there if there's another reason we have to change the routes. So I don't know, if we only want to, if we're only going to change them under those circumstances, then no change would be required. But if we do want a little bit more flexibility, then I'd suggest using i.e. EG.
Okay. So Mr. Subers did respond to you?
Yeah. They can't hear. No one can hear.
I know.
They have the microphone.
Yeah. Here, why don't you re, right?
Do you want me to say it again?
Yeah. You could come closer.
Is this better if you turn it down? I'll try to keep this brief here. There's a comment or a question here about the proposed busing contract under 13 routing, the operating time schedules. The way the proposed contract is worded indicates that says here, "The routes need to be modified during the school year, i.e. new schools added, schools realigned, schools closed, etc., etc. The contractor here shall implement any routing changes soon as possible, but no later than five days following notice from the school district." My concern, and this might, I mentioned to Brian, Mr. Subers, it may seem pedantic, but saying, i.e., we're listing the only reasons that we could change the schedule and the contractors would have to modify it. If we're going to try to keep it open-ended for us, we should use EG because those are examples. So I, and he confirmed that on a script reading of the contract, that it's correct. It might have an issue there if there's another reason we have to change the routes. So I don't know, if we only want to, if we're only going to change them under those circumstances, then no change would be required. But if we do want a little bit more flexibility, then I'd suggest using i.e. EG.
Okay. So Mr. Subers did respond to you?
Yeah.
Okay.
They can't hear. No one can hear.
I know.
They have the microphone.
Yeah. Here, why don't you re, right?
Do you want me to say it again?
Yeah. You could come closer.
Is this better if you turn it down? I'll try to keep this brief here. There's a comment or a question here about the proposed busing contract under 13 routing, the operating time schedules. The way the proposed contract is worded indicates that says here, "The routes need to be modified during the school year, i.e. new schools added, schools realigned, schools closed, etc., etc. The contractor here shall implement any routing changes soon as possible, but no later than five days." My only comment and suggestions would change i.e. EG because i.e. limits to only those circumstances, whereas EG, those are only examples of reasons why we change the routes. And the comment I made is, if we're not going to change routes for any other reasons, we don't foresee changing routes. I believe that this is the interest of preserving our options, not changing EG. Again, I mentioned it might seem pedantic, but on the script reading, Mr. Subers confirmed that the finance extension is correct. Again, of course, we're not going to change the route to EG.
Okay.
That was my comment. Thank you.
I also had one comment on item K under the Tompkins pissed tax collection.
We might release the Michael Finns. We don't have to. Sorry. I'd rather do it once.
So under item K for Tompkins pissed lockboxer, that was recommended by the finance committee. One thing I did not see in that, I don't know if it's an issue, but Tompkins will also take payments via counter as they're changing, so the grant figures. I don't know if that needs to be in that area or not, but they will take payments via the grant at the first thorough and excellent.
Mr. Ocasio Neill had handed out some bus adjustments. Did these impact the contract at all?
We'll talk about that in a second.
Is there any other comment under finance? If not, I would, I'm sorry.
H, what's the location of the donation?
The television?
High school.
It's a high school gym? On the exterior of the high school gym?
What's the purpose? What are we for use for?
Just, just to show videos and what's happening in sports. It runs on, it'll run on a loop.
Like informational?
Informational.
It's an informational kiosk?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I did wanted to acknowledge the donation by the Sports Boosters and O&amp;J Roberts, JROTC for donating the drill rifles to, to the Danny Boone, and also the anonymous $750 gift to the TSA students. Is there any public comment under finance? Seeing none, the next item, eight facilities. This is the motion to approve the resolution, continuing the resolution, phase two. Is there any comments or questions? Want to thank Mr. Miller for giving us a tour of the building today, showing us the classroom space, the available space. It was very helpful to see what the plan is going forward. It's one thing to see it on paper, it's another actually to, to see the space and how it's going to be utilized. And there are no classes will be held in a janitor closet. We got to see that two-thirds classroom, that was described that way. So it was good to see. Is there any other, any comments by board members? Any public comment on eight for facilities?
I have a public comment, and I'm not going to come up there with this, because I might come out and there's no side of the sheet. But there was an indication on the website that there would be an updated enrollment headcount, and it was not. Number one. Number two, I know that you all toured the facilities and you're satisfied with the answer, but quite frankly, with your enrollment numbers being so sporadic within the past year, and the five different presentations that we've held and seen, I think we all know for us to know exactly which classrooms these students are going to, what capacity, what numbers that we're talking about, and if there's going to be any cuts in staff. I don't think that that's real, you know, so far. And I think that since we're going to be holding a closing meeting very soon, that that information can be made a couple of students later, just so that we all know exactly what we're getting.
Can you get that in?
Okay, we don't, we don't list classrooms where teachers are on the website.
So far, last year, we listed a lot of different things, and I don't think we sold that in public.
Okay. The enrollment numbers, if not, should be on the website, but if not, they will be tomorrow, if not tonight. We don't list our floor plans online. No, no district does that for security reasons. So if you would like to receive a private tour of the school, you can, but we don't post our floor plans where the teachers and students are in the building. That, that doesn't happen. No, no school does that.
Do we have a list of at least how many children, in which grade, and what, do you know, that they're in class?
Okay. Well, last year, we.
That's going to be available prior to the next.
Last year, the board agreed, I believe at the end of March, where we would use those enrollment numbers for staffing and things like that. So we have a enrollment number, that should be online. If not, like I said, it'll be on tomorrow. And once we get, once we get those enrollment numbers, we agreed that that's how we would plan our staffing moving forward. We have a preliminary plan for staffing already based off, we started that in December. And we look at it month, I'm sorry.
And developing a layout of teachers?
It would re, there would be a reduction based on enrollment.
Potential.
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 Potential. But that's the same way every year. That's no different than last year.
Mr. Baby, I just wondered. I know you're questioning the numbers, and you've been hung up on them for a while. And you bring that up pretty much every time we have one of these discussions. And what we're doing now is taking the current headcount that are in our classrooms today and projecting them forward. And every time they change, those numbers will get projected forward. And the numbers we're seeing are actually, I think, lower than what was originally projected in the study that was done several years ago. So, you know, we're not tweaking numbers or, you know, changing forecasts, or it's the current headcount. We're assuming that if I have 200 4th graders today, next year, I'm going to have 200 5th graders. We're assuming that no one's leaving, and we're not getting anyone. Now, of course, that won't be exact, right? When we start class in six months, or, you know, it'll be different. But those, that's how we're, we're looking at the space and how many students we're going to have.
You are projecting kindergarten and first grade though, because those are not accurate numbers.
Well, first grade, yeah, the first grade is, we know there's always a lift in first grade, and it's, it's probably, you know, 20 to 30 extra kids somewhere in there. And, you know, kindergarten is probably going to be somewhere where it was this year, somewhere around the 210 range. And, you know, that, but everything else is just moving the headcount forward. So there's no readjusting the numbers. And as far as teacher cuts, and, you know, again, that goes back to, how many teachers do we have when, you know, if, if, if we move 4th grade out of Berksboro, what's the realignment due for, for the classroom sizes? All that will be discussed in public, and all of that will be voted on by the board. That's, there's been no decisions and, and no official discussions on that at this point.
Is there any other public comment on facilities? Sorry. Seeing none, presentations by board members? Mr. Martinez, are any secretaries correspondence?
Mr. Wolf, I have one letter that involves the, the school calendar, so when we get to the school calendar, I'll.
Okay. You have correspondence relating to the school calendar, so we'll wait till we get there. The BC IU, Mr. Rathke.
I'll keep it very brief, since I was actually sick at the last meeting, I didn't go. Didn't want to scare my germs through the IU, but looking at the agenda, I think probably the, I'm sure they had a nice discussion on potential increases in funding to pre-K programs and such that the governor put forth. We see that actually materializes, but they did renew a contract with the Mullenburg School District of Busing, so that's probably the second item.
Thank you, Mr. Rathke. Ms. Tardasky, the Berks Career and Technology Center?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. At the meeting at the end of February, we had a presentation regarding the, basically the, the jobs in the economy in Berks County. And we've been pretty steady in Berks County as far as manufacturing jobs. We actually have 18% of the workforce is in manufacturing jobs, just about 32,000 jobs, 7,000 at DECA, and 25,000 at 500 other companies. And the age of that workforce is an older age, and so they're trying to figure out how to prepare for those retirements. So things like industrial mechanics and those types of jobs, they anticipate a shortage. The other, the second other highest job sector is healthcare and social services, and that has increased 50% between 2001 and 2016. Now, IT, you know, is down, and finance is down, but it seems that the sectors of manufacturing and healthcare are rising, and they're trying to, Berks Career Technology Center is trying to work with business owners and the businesses to find out how they can help frame replacement workers for those fields. So that was kind of interesting. And then the other, the other major thing that was the topic of discussion was the budget, which was approved by the JOC, and you folks have a copy of that, and. which was approved by the JOC, and folks have a copy of that, and we will be voting on that at the next meeting. So if you have any questions about that, feel free to shoot them to me or ask them, and I will get answers for you if I don't have the answer.
If any board members have any questions, and Ms. Tardowski, otherwise we'll move to Mr. Martino for the legislative report.
Three quick items on the legislative report. One, the legislature and the governor seem to be far apart in their budget discussions, which is pretty common for March of each year. Number two, Governor Wolf, as part of that budget discussion, has talked about an early retirement incentive, but at this point in time, it's only for state employees and our public school employees. And just for public knowledge, the, this board has not had any discussion to doubt an early retirement incentive, and I don't believe we have any intention of doing so. And the last thing, very quickly, is for those of you that heard, please chief Kenzie's presentation on the school resource officer, that's still in the infancy stages, but I want to publicly thank Senator Rafferty for at least trying to facilitate the process.
Thank you, Ms. Martino. Are there any questions? Ms. Martino? Is there any public comment on the presentations by board members? Seeing none, we'll move to Personnel, 10. As I understand it, 10, 10C to B, we hopefully will have a name to go with that position by the next, by the voting meeting? Okay. Is there any questions on Personnel?
So are we, question, are we actually going to get a recommendation from your committee?
Yes. I guess I should speak to that.
Okay. I guess I also had, are these job descriptions pretty, are they pretty set yet, or is that-
As far as I'm concerned, no, because the committee hasn't talked about them. The reason why they're on the agenda now is to expedite the process. Just having-
Because I have some concerns, some concerns about like some of the education requirements, and I thought some of them were a little, it has a little bit overly inflated for maybe something, so that's-
Would you be able to forward me those, or the whole committee? Great, thanks.
And I believe you'll be meeting Monday at 6 o'clock?
Yeah, I can talk, I have my little update on here, I can give it then if that's fine. We have a little section.
Okay, all right. Is there any other questions on Personnel? Any?
With regard to item 10B1A, is there a plan as to what to do about security around near-term, not element of the country, the situation that's going on there? You know, I understand that, and I understand why the need is taken, I'm just trying to understand what the implications are for the day-to-day operating risk.
We're handling, I'm in constant contact with Casey every day. We have GCA here, we have Brown's crew, so we're fine. He's in and out, so we talk every day.
Is there any public comment on Personnel? Moving to Programs, we get the month, all the items there, monthly headcount statistics, all the attachments. We'll be looking at the one-to-one iPad initiative for the high school to get the, to get that started for introducing it to the teaching staff first for next year, and have the professional development that goes along with that for the rollout, and then the students would receive it en masse the following year. That's, that's the plan as it's been presented at this point. That's the big item there. Also, the student, the student calendar. I know we received a couple of comments about the concern with the two-hour delay start and how that would, you know, affect families, so I wonder what everyone was thinking on that.
That was my, as a parent, that would be my first concern. Why is it important?
I just want to know what's, what's being used for, or whatever.
Well, the two-hour delays are going to be used for professional development. What we normally would do is have an early dismissal, but we felt that children being home and monder and teachers are fresher in the morning, where they could come in for a couple hours, do their training, and then students come in and continue with their day. If we do a early dismissal, the students go home, teachers are there, then the kids have to come back and do their activities in the evening. So the, the two-hour delay doesn't throw off any after-school activities, it just continues on. And it's two hours in the morning, we'd rather have that than kids have to go home, than try to find a way to come back. And some really just kind of hang around, especially at the high school, just kind of hang around and get into trouble.
Could you do it differently in maybe busing as an issue here for elementary students? Could you do it in the afternoon, the traditional way, for students at middle school and high school, where they have those activities after school?
Students have activities after school here also.
But is it really, do a lot of students have activities here after school?
There are students with activities after school, and then generally, parents have things set up after school for sitters and things like that. So we figured two hours in the morning would be less of an impact.
Is there a way that we can stack instead of doing these early dismissals or early or late starts? Can we do, just have fewer, do in-service days and full in-service days?
We have, we have to get credit for school days, we also have to do professional development training for the one-to-one.
But do they have to be on the same days that we have class? Can't we just have an in-service, can't we, instead of doing these half-days, have an in-service day and then combine these trainings? Stack them instead of doing it like you have pre-half days, have one full in-service day, I guess it'd be two half-days, if they're truly half-days.
I'm sure anything's possible, but we felt this was the most, least disruptive way of doing it. Also, when we, when we do training, we like to focus in on an activity. That's why we, we did it this way, and it's two hours.
Chunks, chunks too.
Chunks, right.
It would also make sure that if you stack them, you would extend the date of the year, because you get credit for a full day, a full would only be two-hour delay, right? But if you make a whole in-service day, now you're adding a day at the end of the year, because you haven't reached your 184.
You'll also see that the holidays are intact the whole year with snow days, where we extended the school, I, heck, I did it, extended the school year because the staff needs, and students need their holidays. When I was here my first year, we had no holidays, and everyone got really cranky. So I want them to have their holidays and get a break, I want them to have a legitimate spring break, legitimate President's Day, a legitimate Martin Luther King Day, have some time off. And if we have inclement weather, we tack it on at the end of the year like other districts do.
Is there, the start of the year is always a debate, you know, pre-holiday, post-holiday. Are we, is there a pattern, or are we following it every other year?
No. The start of the school year is August, the start of the school year is August 28th prior to Labor Day. We're in line with other districts, what they're doing, what we try to do is get students back so that we can be ready for testing and other programs, and have teachers back. We don't want to start after Labor Day because then it lessens our time to prepare for state testing. If we look, we're one of, 1, 2, 3, 4, maybe a handful or half dozen of other districts going back to 28th, a few are going back the week before us. So you want to get in early as you can for testing.
Okay, the PC is also up and running.
Yes.
Well, last year, we started after, correct?
Last year, we started for a number of reasons after.
Contractual.
Contractual. But now we don't have that, since we have a contract in place, and we like to go back to school 28th.
Any other board comment?
Yes.
The correspondence I mentioned was about the two-hour delay. Looking at the calendar, there is no two-hour delay in February, is there a reason for that? No. Yeah, the other thing is, we have started after Labor Day the last two years, I believe, and maybe it's my age or tradition, but I still think we should start after Labor Day. People plan vacations leading up to Labor Day weekend. I think you're just looking for an absentee rate amongst the students that week, but we'll vote on that. Will this have to be revised, since there's no late start, two-hour delay in February?
No, the students have off, they have early dismissal days.
Yeah, but they have early dismissal in November also, plus Thanksgiving. Well, I'm saying, they have early dismissal and a two-hour delay, I was just wondering why that's the only month without it.
No, no reason, there's no PD that, PD that month.
Okay, sorry?
Okay, if there's no more board comment, is there any public comment? Oh, there is.
I don't, I'll wait.
We're still on 11, right?
Still on.
Okay. I do have a question. I'm sorry.
I was wondering about item 11. What is the Students Affairs Caucus?
I wouldn't ask.
How is it different? Student Affairs Caucus, very similar, it's a group that operates outside of student government, the students bring up a variety of concerns, often times around race, around gender issues, and you can have, obviously, they need to have a voice, a lot of person supervises that, so that would make, we have about 90 or 20 students in there, and essentially the work that they've done, John, who is here tonight, because he is the president of Cleveland, is another group that worked for the primary distorted speaking series, so they've done a lot of good work, and I think that they've done a lot of positive work around helping other posts understand, what is the student government? Well, I get that, of course, from those guys, they have legislative bodies of school and stuff like that. I'm only asking that because I was involved in these things, and-
But you have talks with, you think it's just like national government, and their talks with the government that's less interested in student government.
And they give information. I feel like that's the student government issue, but, all right.
If there's no more public comment, you want to do your quick mention?
Wait, I have a question also for Mr. McKnight, just to make it a matter of record. We've had other clubs established with no request for a stipend, only to find out there is a request for a stipend, so are we saying when we vote on these three clubs, there'll be no stipends at times?
That's correct. I will not ask for a stipend for it.
But I mean, it won't happen like a week later.
There's not, well, supposedly they have advisors who are willing to volunteer now. Sometimes down the road, you know, these things come back, and you ask later, but at this time, there's no stipend.
Thank you.
Well, I suggest that the motion be worried to put that into the minute.
Decodify it.
Friday, but there is no stipend, you know, in perpetuity, unless we're going to change that for the later day. Moving on to item 12, Curriculum Instruction. I don't have an update because I provided the update last month, there's a time between this and that.
Big ass.
However, the next meeting will be on March 20th at 5:30 PM at the administrative office, and the agenda is already on the website, so you can check that out, I think a week earlier. And if there are any, if there's any questions there, feel free, but the meeting hasn't happened yet.
Is there any public comment on Programs? Might as well just give it back to Connor.
Oh, I just gave that update.
Oh, that's, that's it? Okay. So no other public comment, we'll move to the Extracurricular Committee.
Well, Sam has her hands on the chair, right, and he's talking next to her.
I shook a, I shook a whole lot of hands earlier, so you're taking your, taking your chances.
So we did meet this evening with the Extracurricular Committee, we continued our discussion on sports clubs and marching band. We are, as a committee, forwarding one recommendation tonight, with the understanding that we're also going to have, continuing the discussion in the Curriculum and Instruction Committee as well. But my committee felt that we are willing to agree to bring back marching band as a curricular piece to the high school. This is tonight, four of us, we do have staff that is on the site already that would handle that, it would be a first-period class, and by doing so, we would, by making that part of the curriculum again, we would have to cancel that fee that we de-charge for the marching band. Although, something else came up, where I had to have a conversation with our attorney about, about the fees in general, which I'll get back to folks on, but as of right now, there wouldn't even be a fee then for the, for the marching band folks to do so. But Mr. Kurtz's Curriculum and Instruction Committee wants to build down within the warrant exactly how that class would function and what they're providing for. That was our meeting for this evening. While I have the microphone, was I going to go to Finance and skip over Facilities?
Well, I asked if there's any public comment.
Public comment? Public comment? All right. I'll skip over to Finance, and we'll go back to Facilities then, since I have the mic here. In Finance, we, of course, we had a discussion about the upcoming budget or the state or lack thereof. We approved the recommendations for the lock box, lock box with this bank. We also, part of the governor's budget is a reduction in busing, but again, that's to be seen, what the actual state budget comes out with. We also did continue our discussion of the capital tax, and we were leaning actually towards maybe bringing away with that. We're going to go down a little bit more though on the actual, trying to get actual costs from our labor involved in the connection with that tax, so we'll, we hope to actually come back to the recommendation very shortly on that. So we'll see, we'll see what happens after with that. We also did chime a little bit about our CAFE fund, we're kind of hoping perhaps the end of the year to see us increase our CAFE fund, they have a deposit in there, so we shall see if it's at the end of the year. I also had a thought, and I did not bring this up to our committee, but I'm thinking maybe, and we had this, always had this discussion every year about potential staffing cuts as part of the budget as well, with reduction in enrollment in the K5, which is a potential. I'm thinking maybe we want to have some kind of budget workshop, where we can have that with the discussion of Board, instead of coming here at the first meeting in June and trying to hash it out, and see what the Board will agree upon.
Yeah, I was kind of wondering, like, whose jurisdiction is that? Is it Finance or Personnel?
We scheduled one last, I think we had one poss, at least one last year, around the April timeframe, so that would be-
Either, either April or May, having a open budget workshop.
The sooner it's, you take the sooner the better, since we agreed-
I'm just saying, like, who's, which group brings a formal proposal to the board?
What I've asked, so what I've asked, I'm interested to do is, is come to us with the recommendation for their staffing model.
Okay.
And then, and then we can all have a go at it, see what we-
All right.
What comes out with. Any questions for the board? Come on in. There's no public comment.
Is there any public comment on Finance?
I'll shoot out some dates then, and we can all see if we can get the dates real good.
Yeah, once, as we said, once March is done and we lock those numbers in, that's really what we're going to use going forward, so then we can make some hard and fast decisions. Since we skipped over Facilities-
Did you just announce the next meeting?
Oh, okay.
Well, I'm getting it over here.
Oh, of course. The Stolling School meeting is meeting next Monday, March 2nd at 6:00.
Next, next time, somebody test that they, if it was working.
Saturday night, it wasn't working, but it was working. Now it's not, you can't be here. Your meeting on March 21st at 18:00 PM. I try the rules, my meeting is an hour and a half, but I'm concerned-
I try the rules of my meetings, an hour and a half, but I'm concerned I think this one might go over, compared to what we do in my year, until after eight thirty, next Monday. But other than that, the agenda is none yet, I'm on the website, but hopefully I can get it up. Thank you.
Any public comment? Policy?
Oh, it's Mr. Scott.
Are we changing?
Yeah, we skipped a lot. Since the microphone is like a baton, we're handling it back and forth.
Next meeting is in two weeks, prior to the school board voting meeting. Last, our last meeting was pretty much dedicated to old business, particularly policies revolving around special education. And we've been working very closely with Shelley and our district council on getting these policies revised, because they, there's some varying opinion between our attorneys and what PASPA has sent us. So, we're sort of debating those things internally, and Mr. Hurley is also contributing to helping us with that. That's about it. Any public comment?
Seeing none, we'll move to transportation.
So, we had a transportation meeting on February twenty eighth. At that time, we discussed the changes in the contract that were summarized at the last meeting by Mr. Subert. We discussed the changes, which I can recap it, and we feel that the needs do so. Well, I think the most important thing to keep in mind is that the changes were all minor, and that none of them result in any change in the daily rates that were quoted in the RFP facilitation. So, the transportation committee, as we saw in the finance area, recommended that we approve the revised contract, so that will be voted on in two weeks. We also discussed the dispensation of the transportation clerk, but only very briefly, because, once again, there's some overlap between transportation and personnel committee with regard to the, to where the clerk position is going to reside, if we were responsible, that will be. So, we, we just very briefly touched on the issue and deferred the conversation, the full conversation to the personnel committee, because we felt that it was well-appropriate to be handled there. And only, the third item that we discussed is the item that I gave you on the handout for, that, when I arrived this evening. There was, there has been one incident this year that made me think I should discuss the middle bus, sorry, the middle school capacities in bus rostering. Essentially, the middle school, the sheet that I gave you, that I gave you all, has the bus runs and the number of students in each of those runs. At forty-eight, it's, we are two to a seat, okay? And then, any, any number above forty-eight, from forty-nine to seventy-two, which is the maximum capacity for a bus run, we are three to a seat, in some seats, assuming that everyone's on the bus. And for middle school, unlike the high school, the middle schools aren't driving, so the vast majority of the middle schools are on the bus, both to and from school every day.
Is this, this is all the buses?
This is all.
On the middle school.
Middle, just middle school runs?
Yep. So, the, the crowding issue is just to that point. The, there seems to be, there's less of a crowding issue in high school, because despite the number on the rosters for high school, so many kids drive or have extra particular activities, that even if there's a roster of well above forty-eight, there, because of the kids' activities and their ability to drive, there doesn't seem to be any crowding issues, particularly on the high school buses.
But if we have, you know, a hundred kids rostered, even if we know only sixty are going to ride every day, we still have to provide enough buses for a hundred?
Well, we don't, I don't believe that we have any rosters above the seventy-two.
I'm just, I'm saying, like, let's just say we have a hundred kids, and we need five buses, you know? I have, we have to provide them, whether they're full or not, so if there's ten kids riding them every day, we've still got to run.
That's correct. That's correct. So, in elementary school, based on the student, on the average size of the students, you can have, generally speaking, larger rosters while having real space concerns. When I speak to space concerns, our, a real concern is safety, and not the, not the space in and of itself. Essentially, I think, as you all know, the way that the seat fell, sorry, the school buses are built, each, there's, each seat essentially is part of a safety compartment, and that assumes that each child is seated perpendicular to the seat back in front of him, and that his or her whole person is entirely contained.
Everyone's in the compartment.
Exactly. Not that, not that the third person is hanging in the aisle, right. When, when that is the case, there are safety concerns, and additional safety concerns in situations where there's a hard stop or an accident, job seat, which is generally speaking, result in a hard stop. So, the issue is that, and additionally, this is an age when kids are, generally speaking, more, have more personal space issues than they might at younger ages or older issues, depending on who they're sitting with and the size and so forth. So, there's also situations where perhaps kids could fit safely in a seat, but the seats are thirty-nine inches wide, so it's thirteen inches per student, which obviously is not very wide, and then when you add in backpacks, anything that kids might be carrying. So, the issue is just that the middle school rosters are pretty crowded. And we have one incident this year where there was a hard stop, a child fell out of the seats into the aisle, complained afterwards of concussion symptoms. The safe, the security footage, the bus video was pulled, and not that I, not that anyone is questioning the veracity of the claims of the child, but the video does not show any, any material impact that would appear to be, have, you know, have been forceful enough to cause a concussion, honestly, any impact at all. But once again, it just led me to think, while, because these buses are crowded, there is additional liability risk here if something should go wrong, and because the buses are crowded, a parent feels that the safety of the kids have been influenced by the rosters. So, I asked Ron to put together this spreadsheet, which I passed out to you, that shows that we would need essentially four additional buses to get the roster size below, to get the rosters below forty-eight in every case, in which case it would be two to a seat, and it would be, you know, we would significantly lessen the liability risk, because clearly two kids can fit on a full-size bus. So, so I brought this to the transportation committee two weeks ago. The committee agreed that it was at least something that we should make the board aware of, and give us the opportunity to. The concern, of course, is that obviously paying for four extra buses per year would be expensive, but the concern is that the liability exposure in the long run is actually greater than paying for the buses. So, I just wanted to throw it out there to, to the board and say, hey, this is a situation where we either need to pay the extra money, or we need to be willing to take the additional liability exposure that's generated by having rosters of these, of this capacity. And I don't, I don't have a recommendation specifically, I just thought I would make the board aware of it, and open it up for discussion. Can everybody clear on what the issue is?
So, one question I had is, these buses that are under realized, means are waiting to, we have like a negative thirty.
I would, I would have to have further conversation with Ron, but I'm assuming that, based on geography, that's why that bus, I mean, if you look at the, it's a union, totally, like, it's probably a bus that goes to the furthest parts of the district, and there probably isn't a good way to effectively utilize that bus better, or else they would already be doing it, or reinvolve.
Well, but he's, he's assuming, I mean, the total overage is eighty-four, and he's taking that, divided by forty-eight, and getting two buses, so he's assuming optimum efficiency of two extra buses is going to pick all those overage kids up in all those different spots. It seems like, even if you had two buses, they're going to have to tweak their, their patterns to optimize them anyway. So, I would imagine if they're going to do that, then they can certainly turn those other buses and make them a little bit more efficient in their pickups.
Not only that, Dane, but even a bus going to the farthest point of the district still has to go back to the school and pass by other sections.
Yeah, like I said, I would have to have a discussion with Ron about this specific, some of the bus are, are roster, you know, no, are routing or roster experts, so I rely on information.
Yeah, because once you, if you would put additional stops on the, on the return trip, you, you may be increasing the time on the bus, which is beyond what our goal was, to keep it, you know, you know, so.
There's a lot of variables to.
We're going to be rerunning all the routes with new software, right?
That's correct.
So, we could have completely, I mean, this is really.
Okay, yes, we can have different results, but I can't imagine that it would go from four to one, or, you know what I mean?
We're just thinking about the efficiencies that could be realized in that one bus.
Now, I did, I'm sorry, go ahead.
When I was up at the presentation, we had those presentations, I think one of the services that was provided for five thousand dollars was a route optimization, like, we can sort it right out. Would it be timely time to do it? I know we'll be doing it again with the goal, but rather than, you know, spending all that for all those extra buses.
The trial, the trial run for our own.
Yeah. They almost guaranteed efficiencies, although, I mean, we're just, we're just, we were just asking them to run the middle school, I guess, at this point.
My point is just that if there's a hundred and eighty-seven kids, they're not going to get it from four buses to one. Yeah, yeah, maybe, it goes from four to three.
No, but what Jeff is saying is just the opposite. You have eighty-four kids spread out all over the district, you can't just divide by forty-eight and come up with two, because they're in different locations.
I'm guessing that they're, he's just saying that, you know, to start, it'd be at least two more buses, and then you got to rerun the routes and figure out where the kids can get on and where they can't.
Right, this isn't intended to be a specific action plan, it's a general.
It's making a.
It's just saying, we need more buses. I mean, whatever the number is, is yet to be determined, but we need more buses.
Right.
Yeah, but the bus company's going to have to know soon.
Yeah.
And, and before we can vote on additional buses, we're going to need to know the actual number of buses and the actual cost.
No one's listening to that. I just wanted to start the discussion, I don't think, at this point, it's terribly time-sensitive at this point, especially since we're in the routing conversion and so forth, you know what I mean? Like, I just wanted to throw it out there, make sure that everyone was aware of it, and make it clear that I think that it's a legitimate safety issue, particularly for this age group. And then suggest that we at least, you know, consider the implications of.
I did have a, since the busing contractors are here, I did have a question, maybe, that after our meeting, I thought about it. Does the bus driver look in their rearview mirror, and they, if they see somebody kind of sitting off the side of the seat, will they say that, hey, you know, you got, regardless of that person, is a girl, and you're a boy, and you, you know, you got to, you got to move over and get in your seat? Do they actually do that, or should they?
I'll continue, and we try to get them to move into their, try to get them to sit in the compartment. Do they listen? That's about that, that's how I met Chris, but, yes, so I would technically, yes, definitely.
Because this year, this year's kind of set, we're, you know, the buses we have were the buses we have, and, you know, if we have a safety issue that we can address by simply having the drivers be more attentive to, you know, the kids, making sure they're in their compartment, even if it's, you know, two, you know, a boy and a girl being pressed together, that's, you know, that's, safety is more important. Thank you.
One other thing, too, is that, this, this issue that we were discussing actually happened on my bus, so I was involved. The driver knew that that student was, was out of the seat that the student was supposed to fit, by the time I get to middle school, thirteen inches is not enough space, and we're three middle school students to sit next to each other. So, I think that that's one of the other things. Also, we also discussed the transportation committee, meaning that it's been theorized that there may be a need for additional buses anyway, due to the organization of the elementary schools in the form, so there's possibly that we literally may already be three routes, other than having two.
Okay. Thank you.
We've had one today, commented on the additional buses, primarily at the middle school. One thing to remind is the sidewalk at the middle school, whereas in other buildings, the walkway is wider, is somewhat more.
I could see some walkers at the middle school, kind of through the park.
Unless he lived right at one of those houses. Is there, there's, sorry, public comment?
Yeah, I got a question for you on that.
You want to?
I certainly don't look like a fool. I don't know if there's special provisions for school buses or not, but I know years ago, with the vehicle code, there were provisions for school buses, there was one person per sixteen inches of a seat. I don't know if that's been withdrawn, or, you know, changed, or amended, or anything like that, or what the rules are. I know years ago, there was a rule, you had one person per sixteen inches. And, you know, I know my kids have been on the bus suite street or a seat, and it's very challenging, and causes a lot of anger, frustration, and so on and so on. So, I'm just saying, for liability purposes, if there is such a thing, you might want to look into that, just for liability purposes. I can't hear you back here, so I can't remember everything you're saying.
Can you state your name and, and your address for the record? Sorry?
Steve Chide.
In your address?
Two nine two nine Lineville Road.
Thank you.
Just something to check you on.
Thank you. Is there any public, other public discussion on transportation? Seeing none, old business, just approving the minutes, of which there, there was an amendment. And is there any public comment on the minutes? Seeing none, we'll move to new business. Mr. Martino, you wanted to discuss the PSBA voting delegates?
Yes, and I apologize, I had this letter passed out to everyone, and I just read the letter, and it's not very complete. It doesn't say where the PSBA voting delegates will take place, so I will get that information to you. What the voting delegates do is, they, last year, I attended, and it was held in Harrisburg, and the PSBA makes the motions, and then the body votes yea or nay. And as a third-class district, we're entitled to two delegates, so I will get you more information on where and when this is held. So, start thinking if you are interested in attending, and maybe we have the names submitted by the committee of the hall in April, and then we can vote on it at the end of April.
So, Martino, wasn't it?
Yeah, but it doesn't say where.
Actually, it's like the old, old business. You know, I was never a big fan of the, of the peach dar system, but I, I did have one, one comment that I thought I would share. I guess, one organization wanted to offer after-school tutoring as a free option, but they said the cost to go and be a peach dar. tutoring as a free option, but they said the cost to, you would be a Peach Dar, trying to, they're trying to do something for the community, why would they pay, you know, some twenty-five dollars a school, getting that out, notification, when they're offering something, something free for the community, so, that's it. I, I, I was, I would, I never liked that Peach Dar to begin with, but...
Any other questions or comments on the new business?
I have something just quickly. I noticed, I was going to say this last meeting, the, um, microphones, I know we've had some issues, some just don't work, and I know it's not tonight, but they all know it's not tonight.
Oh, it is tonight.
But there were some few that are kind of duns now, and sometimes they're in circulation, sometimes they're not. Presumably, this was an expensive system, and I imagine there's a warranty. Can we get someone to look if they're not working, send back, or just, maybe warranties expire, maybe we can, I don't know, unless just they get to it because...
They were working.
Who is looking, who is looking for it?
Is there any presentation by the public on any issue? Thankfully, seeing none. Do I have a, do I motion?
Second.
We're adjourned.